The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You three, start with the roll.
Yeah, Jones.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
And Randall.
Yes.
Yeah. Monahan, Brenneman, and many, excellent voters.
Okay. Any additions or motion to approve the agenda?
Take a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote, O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Approve the minutes from the previous 7:20 meeting.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? Not, we'll vote, Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Yep, and I'm a yes. No bills, Karen?
No bills.
First time that's happened for... No second, I guess, that's twice now that he hasn't left me with the bills. Any public comments or input from anybody here? Amy?
I'm with her.
Uh-oh.
It's good, it's a good thing, they came for positive things.
Okay, good, well, we know that.
So, I'm Kate Peterson, and I'm part of the Methodist Church in town.
Amy Martin, Christ Lutheran Church.
And we just kind of wanted to come and share, we did a joint EBS, and we did it at City Park last week, and it was like a huge, huge success. We had 143 kids, the first night, 140, the second, and 116, I think, the third night, and then there was like 30 helpers each night. So it was really like a huge engine with the hot weather. But we just wanted to come and share, because it was nice, we were able to use all the park facilities. Terry was a huge help, with it being so hot, we did use the water. We did sprinklers and different things out there, but we even had the parking park to come on night, just to be there to help out. So we just wanted to come and share, and just say that it was a big success, and we're hoping that it'll be starting a new tradition, and if we get the other churches involved next year.
Yep, the pictures worked good, looked like you had a lot of fun.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the solid.
Oh, no problem. That's why we have you.
That's okay, you're gonna like this.
You bet, you do love that. Anybody else?
Good influence, thanks for your dedications and time and effort.
Anything else, anybody? Not? Leah from the Jamboree Committee.
Hey guys. Sorry it's taking me till now to get here, but this has been crazy in my life, but just want to give you an update, have some glass on, it's a little okay. So, for Loomis Hartford, we had five girls participate this year. Kelsey Sanderman, I don't know if you guys seen her on, but she was pretty proud of the crowd around. The movie night, they played The Incredibles. Danny was not totally sure on the attendance, but she said it was a pretty good year this year. They had a beautiful night for the, as far as weather goes. The car show, we couldn't have asked for a more perfect night, I think we had 104 cars that actually registered. However, we indicated on our forms this year they didn't necessarily have to register if they chose not to, so I know that we have way more than 104, but those are just 104 as just the number to register and get voted on. So, that was for the car show. For Friday Night Entertainment, or, excuse me, Burnout, we had 23 registered cars that did the burnout, and huge crowd participation, there was a lot of cheering on that one. And then, Something New Band actually stayed and played, there are approximately 150 people stayed until we told them that we were all done. So, you can go party, but you can't party here type of deal. And then, the vendors seemed to also go pretty well, our numbers of vendors were down a little bit this year, however, we still had a really good turnout for both Friday and for Saturday. Seemed to me that most of them, if they did Friday, they also did Saturday, in the past we've had some that have done one or the other, but most of them that were Friday also were Saturday. For the 5K, Jesse identified that 25 people that ran in the 5K that day, and they raised $400 for the Hartford Optimists Club. And then, our parade, we also had 44 entries there, so really nice turnout for the parade. And for our stage entertainment, we got the American Legion did a flag disposal that is something that came back from past. They've had it in the past, it went away for a while, because they didn't necessarily have that many flags and not as many people, but they came back this year, and it seemed to be a very good showing for that. Our West Central Band, they kicked it off again as well for the stage entertainment. So Danny, I, and his team did an amazing job of the band. Phil Baker loves to entertain, and he got the kids up and dancing, and did some chicken dances and everything, so he was amazing. Then we had the 1270s Band that actually played some really great oldies. It's surprising, because they're a really young group, but Holy Cal can play the oldies, so they actually played for quite a while, kept quite a few people there to listen to them. As far as park entertainment outside of that, we also had Mr. Twister doing balloons, and he was busy until I literally stood in line, and then I had people try to get behind me, and I had the little barebads, and Mr. Twister said he was done. So, but he was there till four, and he was busy nonstop. Hidden Mania also had a really good turnout this year, Jeff gave them actually buckets and shovels. I don't know if the kids had more fun looking for money, or just putting sand in their bucket. So, we went over there a few times, and it was more fun to put sand in a bucket before that, so it was kind of funny watching them. The community supper, the color guard actually hosted it, Sunshine provided all the food for it, and they raised roughly $500. Think it would have maybe been even a little bit better, but that's when it decided it was gonna rain. But they had $500 for the color guard, it was a really nice, nice start for them. For Saturday night in the park, we did do a slightly different venue, we went to a concert venue versus a street dance venue. We had 288 with fans that were sold. We had a ton of compliments on music that was brought into the park. Jen Kooz also sent us a personal thank you back, it said, "Thanks so much for having us, we had a great time, and we couldn't have asked for a better treatment from you, your staff, and your city." So, I know that they were both in Hartford and Humboldt, because they also stayed at Fifth Jades, and I know that in both areas, they said they were treated with the utmost respect and hospitality. So, huge thanks to the communities, both of them, for being here. For beer revenue, we had, as the total beer profit was $7,419.55. A lot of that difference has been from tips, because we did get some tips, and then the cost of beer costs. For the community worship, that was also, we added that this year, nice addition through the community churches. I believe there was roughly 75 to 85 people that showed up Sunday morning, and it was, we were there still after cleanup, and they had a very nice showing, and really good weather for that as well. So, we're very proud that we had a very successful year this year, it was a good community event, brought a lot of people out, a lot of families out, so. What questions you have for us? There are quite a few questions, so I'll answer any questions that I can.
So, I'll, I meant, ask Leah about this, the letter that was sent from downtown. So, have you had any discussion with them, with downtown Hartford, or anything?
They sent the letter, I forwarded it to the committee, and I let them know that, because obviously I'm not the only person on the committee.
Right, right, right.
So, I always make sure the entire committee is aware of it. I know that was discussed on the wrap-up, obviously during planning we'll look at it, but I do know that we've also had a lot of positive comments, and a lot of people that came up to us saying that they haven't been to a Saturday night event for five plus years. So, I don't know if I, we'll have to discuss it. I mean, we also, that's the first that they've said anything to us, and they never reached out directly other than in the letter. So, I did make sure that our committee is aware of the letter and comments in the letter.
All right, yep, just, just wanted to bring it up, because they came and talked about Sarah also this morning. All right.
Yeah, but they have no one that represents them on our committee, so I haven't had a chance to speak to them. They haven't called me or nothing, they just sent the letter, so.
All right, that's a part of all.
It's what?
Seth LaBonte, does he have any?
He is.
I believe he's part of both organizations.
He was there though for the Hartford area ministerial, so.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, it is a part of both.
Yeah. Who is that? Seth LaBonte, he's a pastor, they'll get asked about him. Not this, yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments for Leah?
Did you guys hear anything, were you guys there, did you enjoy it? I was, I was gone, I'm not able to attend, but, yeah.
Yeah, we were, we were down there a good part of the, of the day on Saturday. Yeah, I, I thought everything, you know, was, was good. Good with our grandkids with, so we did hang around for the night, so.
I heard that text, wondered what was going on, and it said they're just foggy for mosquitoes at the park. You should go around and check it out.
Extra fog, I'm foggy, yeah. Yeah, there was a lot of cheering for that. I do know that when, for budget, I do know that we're looking at investing some money into the managers, so, but we'll talk to you more about that as far as when budget comes. And I do know that we also put an electrical drop in the park that's a permanent, that came out of our budget as well. So, we're trying to do improvements as well as do a little more, so.
Well, it's good to have that, good to have it back.
Yes, in full swing, yes, it was very good.
Carnival, any thoughts going forward?
We've already, our theme is out, so we're hoping.
That's probably, if I would say I heard any comments, that was probably the biggest.
Yeah.
And I don't think people realize how involved it is just getting a carnival to town, not only financially, but detail-wise, and just coordination and all of that. Too, I've heard some comments, and tried to say what I could about things, and I just think that there's.
The logistics of it, especially coming up with COVID, I think was the hardest thing that we were told, just because they were so far behind in actually locking in things, and then what states were running and what states weren't. And, yeah, the logistics and the money that's behind a carnival is just astronomical. Way more than most people, it's like, you just get a ride, it just doesn't just show up, so. But yeah, we do have feelers out, I know that's one of the very first topics that we're gonna be talking about when we start meeting again, so. And I just want to say thank you to the 15 of us, because I don't know how much town knows, but I mean, what you've seen is probably 15 people. The 15 committed board members, and that, I mean, they come almost every, I mean, there's, every once in a while you have one or two that isn't able to make it throughout the year to the meetings, but they always catch up, and they always work their tails out that weekend. And not a one of them asks for anything in return, so the best thing that I have, and I know there's quite a few who sit in here, the best thing I can say is thank you to my committee, because that's a lot of work.
Yeah, I would say they don't get enough recognition, I could name all 15, if you forced me to.
We try to stay in the middle.
I feel like the sun won't rise.
Takes a small village.
It does, it does, like they said, they don't ask for much, they just ask for, you know, to celebrate the town, and that's what it's about, it's Hartford, not anything else, so it's not about us. All right, guys.
Enough.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leah. All right, we'll turn on, we got a few applications for upcoming events. First one, Brittany Glanzer for block party permit. Hi, Brittany.
Hello, how are you guys?
Good.
Good, Brittany Glanzer, 106 East Opal Lane, so we are putting in a request for a block party permit on, like, Saturday of August 14th, noon to nine is all we're asking for. We originally had spoken with Teresa, and talked about the whole way from Opal down to Sherwood. After further conversation, we kind of came to an agreement, where, was it Evelyn?
Emerald.
Emerald. We decided to enroll right across from our neighbors, we'd just go right across from there, and then just be closed off until Sherwood. So, just seeing if we could get some barriers put up, and get the okay from you guys to do that.
Any problem with that, Greg?
Nope, we'll give them all.
And then, just like normal, just, we can just slide them out, and just take them back down, like, here, well, I guess this will be the first official year out there, so.
Well, this is the crazy Glanzer Party's moving.
This is, yeah.
Hold on, hold on.
Had to shift it from there to there.
I didn't put two and two together.
We didn't hear anything about something being, she was like.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Got to party with us, so.
All right.
Any questions, concerns?
Questions, or if not, any motions?
Motion to approve block party permit for Opal and Sherwood.
Any further discussion? Not, we'll vote, Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Awesome, same to you guys.
All right, we got a couple special event permits, I don't see tutions here to talk about the convertible cruiser, I guess I'll talk about it as much as any since kind of was my idea. Gee, that's hard to do, yeah. So that's on April 19th, you got the paperwork in there, they're asking for us to shut off the street. A lot of beer, excuse me, a lot of beer outside. Car drive-in, gonna have a food truck. Live music. Should be a great event, I don't know if you've seen it on Facebook. Top's down and bottom's up. It should be really fun. That was Keel's idea, by the way, so, I'm gonna give him credit for that, so.
What time is that, man?
Uh, five, I suspect we'll go five to nine, I would guess, isn't that what they put on there?
Yeah, five, five to nine.
They'll probably set out the barricades maybe a little earlier. They say three to 10, but the event runs five to nine. Should be fun, we're gonna start putting the word out for, see the company, anything that the top comes down, can go, that's what we decide, right?
Motion to approve convertible car cruiser.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
Top's on our vehicle.
That's what we, yeah, I thought that that probably went without saying, but thank you for a clear point. All right, no more discussion, we'll vote, Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, the second one there, also Buffalo Ridge, is for Sioux Valley Energy's employee party. Closure, open container food trucks, kind of similar to the convertible drive-in. 21st of August, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a Saturday, the event runs 4 to 8, they're asking for a three to 10. Sidewalks and First Street to be closed off.
So, Craig, for the city guys, since this is on a Saturday, is any issues with barricades or things of that nature?
We typically, like, we'll bring them on on Friday, we'll set them off the side, and we'll just have, they don't have very much water, so you can slide them like themselves, so.
They usually set them off themselves. Any motions or actions on this one?
Motion to approve the application for special events permit, Buffalo Ridge proven on 21 August 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not, we'll vote, O'Hara? Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. Next up, Resolution 2021-8, Amendment to the City's Design and Technical Standards. I understand you guys went through this P and Z side-off, everything's
They did.
Good standard.
Yep, we went through all of them, we went through, this is, you know, the actual design standard changes are to the what's supposed to be, and so, so that's in detail, but we gave them really this seven-page kind of breakdown of what they were.
Right.
Went through all of those, we had some questions on some of them, but we've got no modifications, so.
All right. Any questions or motions on this one?
Motion to approve Resolution 2021-8.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Not, we'll vote, O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. So everybody pretty working good on that, Keel? Next up, he's already on his way to the podium. No drum roll or nothing?
Any guesses, I guess, you on the day?
Very good.
That's good. Not much on the coffee services for Hartford, we did kind of have a small little raise in coffee service per day from 316, which was an increase of 10 calls. And just a couple things, I was kind of like, traffic stops, we had 73, 22 citations, and 30 brand warnings, and 23 verbal warnings. During this month, we had two DUI arrests in town. We had three family disputes, four car accidents, and then, you know, 11 larcenies, which was a decrease from last month to four, just kind of seems like once a month, once things are kind of rolling, you know, just kind of more stolen cars, and car hoppings, and burglaries are kind of happening, so. Their last recent one was two weeks ago, where we had a couple cars gone through, and some property stolen, so. A lot of the community, a lot of cameras were really helpful, but it looks like this dude's kind of just a lone wolf, kind of a thing. No one recognized him from neighbors I've talked to, and other community members that I know that have never, they've never seen this person before, so. Very interesting type of thing, but we did get a lot of good video, I think I collected four videos from residents, so, but no one can ID him, so. We had 18 case reports, which was an increase of four, we made three arrests here in Hartford, which was an increase of three. A couple of community policing events, yesterday we had two of them at the daycare, which I forgot to put on here. Did a little public safety day at Stepping Stones and Imagination Station, so, good turnout, a lot of kids are super happy to have us there. Our next Coffee with the Cop, well, it's gonna be Pizza with the Cop, it's gonna be August 17th, Pizza Ranch from 437. And then I got the rest of the year locked down, and then going forward into 2022, so doing it once a month, we're gonna go to Swisher, once every six weeks, kind of thing, so. Really, because when winter comes, it's gonna really slow down, and we'll see how that kind of goes, and we'll put people out, ready to do the snowy day to come to them down like that, so.
So your attendance is better in the summer than the winter, is that what I'm hearing?
I don't know, this is my, this is my first year doing it, so, but I'm just assuming from my experience with doing the children's ministry or church events, generally in the winter, it's hard to get people to come on out to the event, so.
I didn't, I didn't know if we had numbers from before.
No, I know Phil Ryan did, but I don't know what type of turnout they had in the times before that. Legends such as Preston Evans, and Steve, or Magic, like, they did their own thing, they just wanted to have coffee, they just sat right next to people and had coffee with them, so, a little bit different to how we're doing it now, so.
Do you refer to them as legends?
Yeah, I consider them legends, yeah, for sure, yeah, so they're good dudes, especially Steve was just a huge influencer in this community, so. Yeah, that's kind of what I got, you guys got anything for me? And then, December, Donuts with Deputies, just for you.
I noticed, Craig, you have the trailer on, on the end of Main Street.
Yeah, it didn't work on that.
Well, it looked like it worked when I went by it, because I was maybe going a little faster than 15, and I seen it flashing at me, and I thought, man, I better get on the.
I noticed it flashing last night, back off the, there's a.
I just, when I turned the corner, it usually comes on.
It was working today. Okay. It was working today.
Yeah, I thought it was to me too, yeah, because I seen it flash in the night.
I tell you, there's times, just down here by our shop, you wanna pull out, there's nobody there, and all of a sudden, you, somebody comes flying down that road.
Oh, yeah.
It's a good spot for.
I know you guys have been out on Pedersen, man, there's occasionally, we have one disco's called Reven out there.
Seems the tar works as well.
Man.
Oh, boy, it's almost burning properly.
Yeah, so.
Yes, just got a question, is there some random nighttime driving going on in the community? I know, I live out in Trojan, and first year we moved in here, I saw a sheriff's vehicle pretty regular at least a couple times a week, and I'm, not that I'm looking for him, but I don't remember seeing any recently, but with all of the car wrecking, I was just wondering if there's some random overnight kind of stuff going on?
Trojan hasn't been targeted.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying in general, with all the car vandalism. Well, I'm not kind of definitely, you should be controlling the railroad, they shouldn't be just sitting in the fire hall, or City 38 or whatever, they shouldn't be moving around this, for city, they should be sitting for about 45 minutes, then driving around that downtown or wherever, so. But the Trojan area, and like that Opal Trail, or Opal Lane, I know that gets driven by people frequently, because of the storages up there, that's a terrible, pretty obvious, so they should be. Well, like I said, I'm, I'm not looking for, I just, when we first moved there, I was pleasantly surprised to see you have a good presence, and I just haven't noticed it as much, not that they're not there, I just hadn't noticed it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Amy?
Yes, sir. My information's in the packet, and Karen Hensway knew this, so I apologize in advance. Just an update on the Hartford Block Party, we had a very nice turnout, the band has already requested to come back, so I guess we're gonna be doing it again. We've had some good suggestions from different individuals, so we're gonna look into that as the committee talks through the wrap-up of that. And then we are getting ready for our golf tournament tomorrow, our Golf Classic. We have 19 teams, we've got some great corporate sponsors, some home sponsors, great pin prizes, and looking forward for a nice day of weather, so nobody gets sunburned hopefully. And some nice food and beverages to be had for everyone, and a great networking experience for all. And then, on the development side, continued work with, meeting with different landowners, working with ISG for different ideas on buildings downtown, the process there, as well as the citywide process, and just working with them to continue to grow our community, so that's my update. Any questions?
Amy, thank you, Amy. All right. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
City Engineer, David.
You have a report there, main thing if you're wrapping up our design standards, that you just, you had to write there. The CIP, they're really looking at more, the one, a big item that we've been working on with Craig and Teresa, than the budget process, and just really reevaluating that five-year, the five years of projects, and really what we want to get accomplished in that through the time. The water tower painting, we just got information back from Wire and Iron on an estimate on that painting, and really some of the indication of when we really should be bidding that to get some opportunity pricing. Western Avenue, no major update there, except that we are working on a concept for that. Not only for the CIP update, but really to get a handle on the full scope and design on that. The project updates are as, as far as there, the main one there, the Western Meadows, we did get a punchless put together, getting that back to the developer there, there's quite a few items that they do need some, just some random touch-up, grass and things like that, that are very typical. And GIS, no major update, on the wastewater feasibility study, that's wrapped up. And the conversations and the meetings that are gonna take place moving forward with the other communities to discuss, you know, really that opportunity. And then really just, the main thing on the wastewater side, is keeping in mind that October 1st date for the, for the water plan, getting on that with the DA and RNA. Any other questions?
Teresa gave us a copy of your.
Oh.
Yeah, and that's gonna be, really be on the agenda next week, you guys should all have a copy of this one.
Okay, yep.
I gave it for this kind of review, so you guys can look through it, and it won't be though on the agenda until next week for an action.
Yep, so that takes that feasibility report, and then that one, the feasibility report really focused on all of those options. The engineering report will focus on the option, and really break that down, and then it'll be all of the DA and RNA requirements, there's about four sections that we'll end up adding, but the bulk of that will be used in that. And then that NPDS permitting is the big one, you know, getting through, and getting that wastewater allocation is a big, big item that's moving forward. Any other questions?
I have a question about upcoming projects potentially, and coming out of our HADF meeting last Wednesday. And coming out of our HADF meeting last Wednesday.
Yeah.
Some direction to get a proposal for some work on the eighteen acre. Do we, does the contract the city has with ISG cover those sorts of requests? Or does the HADF need some additional verbiage or contract or something to cover that?
Well, our contract would cover, but here's the caveat. They're doing this community-wide plan. From what I understand, Amy was talking with Steve Watson, and that's part of city property that's in there. He thinks that they can do it under that proposal.
Because we'll be putting together concepts for that community-wide plan. And one of the big ones is commercial and industrial. So if there's a targeted area, we'll lay out that. And then we can put cost estimates for the infrastructure that would go in there. And we can get a spatial idea for some buildings there. So I think capturing that plan makes a ton of sense.
Sure, okay.
So it's actually, we'd be. Yeah.
Or need to do something additional that we could, something. Okay, sounds great.
All right, anything else for David? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Craig.
Nothing really to add, just wanted to, one thing that me, I guess, didn't get on. Just like to thank ISG for having the drone there to do some video.
Okay.
And then Sturgis, that'll be heading out there on Thursday, so we're going. We got Slurry Seal coming up. I'm going to come in the morning to get things under control. That'll take us. And the other thing in my report is, I guess, like the Lattina eighty-sixth conference, the Water and Wastewater Conference, and you, Jesse, is going to be going there.
Yeah, that paperwork's included. What did you estimate, Teresa, about seven hundred? And it's already budgeted?
We have training and budget.
Yep.
They go every year. They always need to get continuing hours for transportation, sort of.
Rapid City?
Yeah. They're allowed.
Wait, is that allowed? I didn't need to be allowed.
It is required.
Who should approve the request for the SDWA twenty-twenty-one annual conference?
Second.
Any additional discussion on that? And you guys get CE, right? Continue to add for that?
Yeah.
That's another good point aside of that deal. All right, any other questions or discussion on that matter? If not, well, Brandon.
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I got. Unless somebody has any questions for me?
Streetlights downtown, I think, still appear. Hopefully the chips will come in and pick up price and drop for you.
It's been a major out there. We've been backward for the mother endpoint since, I want to say April. Heard anything from, I mean, I've been in contact with, I actually talked to Matt twice or three times last week. But just chips, you can't even the big meters, they're hard to get because they've got chips in them too.
This is kind of a crazy question. Is the bulbs on these new streetlights different than the old ones or same?
These heads over here, they're actually the exact same ones. They just took them off and reused them.
Okay.
The poles are different lights.
Okay.
And then we did slide some over to get them away from the.
That's what I wondered, because I think last night when we were leaving, the solar ones were kicked on.
Yeah, we slid them over some.
Okay.
We actually, on one of them, we took.
That's probably, that's why.
Just to get them to go more.
So you did a, what is that called, Lumen study or what do you call that? What do you talk?
We just said this is where they're going to go.
I thought maybe you were going to throw something fancy at us like.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did.
Just do that. Just throw that out. Yeah, we did a Lumen study. That's all you would have to say, yeah. That's what I was after.
Been out there measuring foot candles.
Yeah. Like, remember when they were talking about that on the NAPS, yeah, we measure this and that, yeah, right.
I think you were making that up as they went.
All right. Thanks, guys. Karen?
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add. Just a reminder that I included the tentative agenda for the municipal league's annual conference, which is in Spearfish this year. I do have some rooms reserved, so if you know you want to attend, the sooner you let me know, the better. I'm not sure the deadline, but I'll find out.
I talked to my Teresa today. She said usually two or three. Craig goes sometimes, Karen goes sometimes, Teresa goes.
Yeah, we always budget for some staff to go, and then we, there's some in your guys' budget too. The council, we're budgeting for you guys to decide to participate as well, so we have a new budget for that as well.
I'm very appreciative.
I did too.
I did too. I think the last one I went, Craig, that's all I went. I told Teresa. I think the only event I went to was the golf. I don't think I went to anything else.
Not me. I went to all my classes.
Yeah, I did too. I think I did too. All right, do we need approval for that or not yet?
Just improvisational.
Okay, all right. Good to see we got some money in the bank, it looks like. It's always good. All right.
We need to speak of it. It's like the Twisties in Hillary. Yeah, speak of it. It might change.
All right, Teresa, anything to add here?
Just going to point out a couple of things, nothing really to add. It's budget time, so busy with that crunching number is the evening next week with Craig and Karen on it. We talked about, excuse me, staff meeting this morning too. Have staff be gathering figures that's going to be needed for operation maintenance. So once again, if you have something you think wants to be addressed, you know, let me know. So we need to track down some cost figures and talk about our budget. Let me know. I do have a couple of dates on the grants that I wanted to point out. We did receive our award letter from the GFMP on our bike trail grant. So we got a hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That's what they'll be paying out. The whole project was, I want to say, sorry, around two hundred and seventy thousand. But that was completely farming it out. So if we can have some of our guys' public works, do some clearing, do some grading and whatnot, we can, you know, get that figured down there. And I think it definitely a worthwhile project that we can get done for reasonable cost for the city. So that would be good. Like I said, we've got an award letter. The agreement itself probably will be two or three weeks behind. We can't do any work till we get that agreement signed and in place. But once we get that, we probably can do some work this fall yet to start that clearing process because there's a lot to clear.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Is that gonna, what do you think, Craig? You're going to make that so we can get some sort of a vehicle down there to spray for mosquitoes?
We'll keep, it'll be that ten-foot path again, so.
We should be able to get it, yeah. That, I guess that was my only thought of that deal. That's probably of all of our bike trail places going to be the one that we're going to need to keep an eye on to probably to spray.
Yeah, and we did the NAP study there. We actually didn't find any there, but we did have one in City Hall here last week.
Okay.
Right, in my office. Bad in my office.
Well, I could take that in direction, but I better not. No, I just, I see the. I see the bad.
My understanding is we need to blame the Methodists for that.
Yeah.
They just kicked them out of the church.
She left. Half of this lady left. We could have kept her around.
Like, I heard like a hundred and fifty maybe.
No.
Where they located like.
Are you kidding?
Just, you know, at their will around town.
I think we didn't do the cult though.
Heard from a very reliable source, like a member.
Yeah, you didn't know how it got here. Did you find it? No. Okay.
We should just move on.
Yeah. You got fit set about that. All right.
Just, and one more thing. So started the storm shelter ground. We've had our theme. I haven't heard anything for over a year. Finally got an email from them last week. They haven't decided yes or no, but they did ask for some clarification on the application. So I know it's still out there, that they haven't lost it and hasn't died. So asked a couple of questions, sent that back to them. So maybe we're making progress, so hopefully it's not another year before we hear any problems. So that was encouraging. The only thing, except be working on budget most of this month, other work we have in progress is I still plan to sit down probably after budget and kind of look over our fines and fees schedule so we can maybe do it, look at an update to that. I'm gathering information to, for the planning zoning board to start looking at the cannabis law and the marijuana law to see what we need to do for our zoning regulations and what we want to allow, what we don't. I've gathered some information from other various cities, so that'll be on their agenda next week to start taking a look on that. We, this month prior to next meeting, the city council though is going to have to set a price on what we're going to charge for licenses for distilleries. So I'm going to look into that a little bit further, but that will be coming on your next agenda to look at because you're under certain dates to get stuff done and we've got at least.
Dispensary.
Yeah, dispensary. You're right, dispensary, sorry.
One of those two, one of those two D words.
Those D two, yeah. No, dispensaries, I mean, yeah, the selling of them and whatnot. So we'll take a look at that while planning zoning, working on the zoning end of it as far as whatnot. So we'll be moving ahead with that. And we'll still need to continue our conversations as far as the ARP funding and where we want to expense those funds. I got a few cost estimates of some of the suggestions we talked about at our last floor round. And like I said, if you have any other ideas of how you want to see those funds used, you know, I gave you that criteria, just let me know and we can maybe get cost estimates of that and get some more discussions about it, so.
All right.
That's about it. Any questions?
All right, anything else for Teresa? Not, we'll move on to new business. First up is the review of intergovernmental agreement with Lennox.
So just the background kind of on this, I'll just kind of starting with that. As you know, we have two part-time positions with the city, a part-time building inspector, part-time code enforcer. They both work full-time day jobs. So you know, when they're here in the city, it's nights and weekends usually. We don't have somebody during the day constantly. It was asked to me, if, you know, do you think we could look at possibly getting somebody to be here during those daytime hours? We threw out there, getting a full-time position ourselves. We talked about, I don't think we're there right now. Our two part-time positions are, you know, a little over ten hours a week working. I can definitely see us giving enough duties or, you know, them being a little more proactive and doing stuff to bump that up to twenty. Don't know if we can do forty though. I've discussed and it was then held that though it would be nice to hire a full-time person and offer benefits, hopefully maybe attract some qualif, you know, more of a qualified individual, you know, out there. So and then, so I was tasked to contact other cities to see if anybody would be interested in basically co-opting with us and sharing a full-time person for that. Happened to hear on the radio that Lennox was advertising for a building, part-time building inspector. Went down to Lennox and met with their city administrator Nathan, and he is here tonight just so it could be part of the conversation as we move forward. Seemed very receptive to the ideal because they too struggle with finding part-time help. Think that they could keep somebody busy for twenty hours a week. So we basically came up with the proposal that was in your packet. So the things we talked about, and this is just discussions between us, you know, it's still got to go between both the boards or whatnot. But, you know, if we can hire a full-time physician, we can offer benefits. And like I said, hopefully attract, you know, maybe a better candidate or, you know, somebody who would be interested in looking at it. We get forty hours and share that half and half between Hartford and Lennox. Hours work, I mean, we can discuss that as conversations go on, whether it be, you know, two and a half days here, two and a half days there, or, you know, if they work four times, duties here, there. You know, that's something that can be, you know, hashed out with maybe even the candidate, what works best or whatnot. Looking at probably a pay range of twenty to twenty-five dollars an hour. That's what I was kind of thinking in my head when I talked to Nathan. That's kind of what they were thinking in their head too as far as paying somebody. Obviously, we'd have to have an agreement between the two municipalities and a copy of a draft agreement, which Tom drafted, is in your packet for, you know, me to review to kind of tell us some of this stuff we talked about. You know, both cities would advertise it. Both would be part of the interviewing and hiring because he's going to be working for both entities. We definitely both want to be involved in it. But for insurance purposes and whatnot, there has to be, you know, city, basically, there's somebody that's got to be the employer, you know. And we approached them, so I said, you know, we could be the employer of record, basically. They would go under than our, you know, insurance as far as work comp. You know, we would offer them the health insurance, dental insurance. We talked about since we've been playing record, like I said, we would offer that out, you know, whether they help out or they, you know, that can be discussed further. But we have to have somebody be the employer of record to offer those insurances to them. We both, you know, it should be pretty seamless. We both are under the two thousand and eighteen, you know, international building code. Definitely would look, when we get somebody hired, to hopefully see if all of our other codes kind of match up. Try to get them as, you know, similar as possible to make, you know, this position, you know, easier for the employee on there, so it's not a whole bunch of different codes for different cities. We need, she knows, to buy him an office and our own supplies. When he's in Lennox, he's under the direction of the Lennox, you know, city administrator. When they're here, they're under the daily direction of the city administrator here. So that was kind of in a nutshell, our conversation about it. Like I said, the proposed draft that's in your packet, Tom drafted it off of kind of these notes that I put out in there. Also in your packet is just kind of, you know, what are the costs of this employee if we decide to go down this route? I did list what possible payroll costs would be. And this includes wages, payroll, taxes, retirement, vacations, sick leave. You know, estimating just using twenty-two dollars an hour, about fifty-seven thousand dollars. That we would share half and half with Lennox. We would pay him out of our payroll and basically bill Lennox, you know, send him supporting documents and pay stubs and that for their half. Insurance is always kind of a variable. I kind of threw out what, you know, if they take insurance with us, there's a difference of whether they take it, whether they take a single family or whatnot. So that cost can, you know, vary there and that's unknown until you hire somebody. But just to throw out there for food for thought, you know, like I said, right now, we're getting between both. And I had Karen add all their hours for the year, and then I averaged that out. We're getting just under eleven hours a week between the both of them. Our payroll costs, and that's what we're paying them wages, and then we pay them mileage to on top of. That's where you figure that in. We're paying about thirteen thousand and a half out. So say we double our hours to twenty hours, you know, double that payroll, that's about twenty-six thousand. I think it costs us almost about twenty-seven thousand, another ten thousand possibly for insurance, depending on what they give. I think we're looking, in a nutshell, I think we're looking at, it'll cost us about ten thousand more to, you know, have somebody here twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty, yeah, twenty hours.
And so the high end on the health insurance, is that, that's fully funded though, the, does the employee? Help me understand, does the employee have to pay?
That would be the city's share, yeah.
That's already the city's share.
So with the family policy, what is it, sixty-five percent, sixty percent, sixty, forty? Yeah, yeah. So that's the city's sixty percent, right? So that's the cost to the city, yeah.
It's expensive.
Yeah.
No, I look at this, the only thing I think of is a vehicle. This assumes that they're going to use their own vehicle and submit mileage. Does that mean?
Well, you know, I don't know what Lennox has, but, you know, everybody, when we drive our person, we get to work.
Yeah.
You know, when they're here driving around, we have a staff vehicle that you, I don't know if Lennox does or not, or if we pay out mileage or how that works.
Depending on how quick do we get our next police line? Depending on how quick do we get our next police client?
Oh.
We'll be moving our old police client into an abandoned vehicle and we'll probably have some P W vehicles. The only thought I had as I looked at this is if you're pulling from a, you know, populace to the east of us, that if you potentially put them in a company vehicle, so to speak, what they could drive home, uh, it'd be another incentive maybe. It's a small incentive, it'd be a cheap incentive to put them in a minivan for $10,000, plus obviously insurance and things like that. Um, but it would be some things that, let's just say they came to Hartford and for some strange reason or they went to Lennox to work that day and all of a sudden, Craig's like, boy, we sure do like the building inspector up here. This looks, so somebody brings it to your attention now they're in their own vehicle between Lennox and Hartford. And it was just probably worst case scenario sort of deal for me. And I think it's a small incentive, uh, when I look at the pay scale that would be on top of there that might, might actually get somebody pause to say, you know what, I should get a company vehicle, so to speak. And I don't have to worry about where I'm at that day if something comes up. I can go to the throat between the municipalities, just something to think about.
Maybe something we have to, yeah.
I did talk with both Brian and Paul about this and, and they agree that this probably isn't a full-time position for Hartford right now. Um, but, um, whether it's 20 hours, um, I definitely know I could pass off, I could keep busy 20 hours for sure. They could be doing the building permits and doing some zoning issues, you know, answering questions. Um, I see the advantage of, yes, definitely having somebody here during the day when contractors are here, when work is being done versus after the fact, you know, when they're already gone and you've got your work done. And, and having set hours for them that when somebody calls and says, building inspector or the code enforcer is here these days, these hours and, you know. And if we go with four tens, I, I don't want to think about that. I kind of like that because, you know, contractors come in early, they stay late. People come home later at night, they would maybe be able to come home. But that's just my thoughts, yeah.
That was my comment today when Teresa and I were talking about this, that if, from the code enforcer standpoint, point, it gives them the ability to catch people after they've come home from work or they need to talk to a homeowner, you know, kind of makes them a little handier from that standpoint, they were working a ten, you know?
Oh, true.
I will tell you that being on properties throughout this community and the amount of properties that I'm on on a daily basis, code enforcer alone could do 20 hours. It is incredible. And I'm not even being picky. I'm not even being picky. I'm just seeing things. So code enforcer alone could do 20 hours. Now, I will also say I'm a little concerned about combining this because I'm not diminishing the position of code enforcer, but building inspector, there is a lot more to that position than there is a code enforcer. There's a lot more and we've got new rules and regulations coming out. Um, I'm very concerned that we don't get someone, that, that there will not be someone with adequate experience and expertise in the building code enforcer area. City code enforcer is, again, I don't want to minimize it, but it's, it's, it's more straightforward.
No, I totally agree with that building inspector. Yeah, you need a qualified individual, you need to do it. We're very lucky to have Paul, he was just up and so he's been great, he's been very good and, yeah.
Paul, what do you want to add?
I want him to.
Yep, yep.
Uh, Paul Thorpe, the building official for the city of Hartford. Been doing this job for 11 years. So Teresa had a conversation with me, it was like a bombshell. Where I come from, Virginia, dedicate a career, this is not a job, it's a career, I support. Three communities in the hot county. I work hard every day, learning the rules and regulations and bringing that to Hartford. I do work Saturdays, I do work Tuesdays nights and our contractors that work those days. I'll also work some sets in mid, middle of the days on call of year, many of the contractors. So what I feel like that, what we're doing is undermine loyalty. You can take 11-year employee, like Ms. Randall said, 25 years in the business, 11 years here, six I C C certifications and to say, thank you for your time and that's it. Who knows what we're going to hire? I hope you do hire someone good, but I don't feel very appreciated. And I know what I can bring to the table and just to grow the community. And I can grow with it and I have for the last 11 years. I'm doing the inspections, I'm doing the plant reviews. Staff can call me during the day and I've got that Hartford phone in with me 40 hours during the, during the week and I'm answering the phone call and I'm giving those people support. If that's the direction, I just want to make sure they're understanding clearly. If that's the direction you want to go in.
So, so Paul, when you look at this, what would it take to hire you? Maybe you want to enhance your position here, not diminish it. Sorry you feel that way.
The city of Brandon is my full-time employer and I'm substantially paying a higher wage. The other disadvantage for, for doing this new arrangement would be that during the 40 hours I'm with Brandon, I don't have to shuffle between cities. That, that's a solid, you know, support in the community, supporting Hartford as well. During the day, a volunteer hour and Tuesdays on Saturdays. So it'd be ill-advised for me to, to be shuffling back and forth in this. It would be something I want to do and not, not take a huge pay cut. So, all right, Teresa mentioned to me, but just, you know, I'm entrenched in Brandon. There's no, I'm not trying to put one community in front of the other. When I do my job and humble and Hartford and Brandon, they're the same. People ask me, I bring the same thing to the table, it's all the expertise. And as it brought up, you know, we're going to be adopting the new I C C codes, 2021. An inexperienced person who doesn't have the connections, and I'm not trying to brag. See, I know it seems like I am, I'm just trying to bring the facts. It could be somebody else out there that I would say the same thing about. I go to I C C national conferences, state conferences, local. I know Bitch Warren in Sioux Falls, we work very closely together. I've earned a lot of expertise with his expertise to go to make these codes change. An inexperienced person's not going to be that, so.
And I would suspect Brandon has paid for all your licensing, your advanced education and your, so I, I hear what you're saying about that loyalty, which is admirable, in my opinion.
So I obviously I'm not for this plan. Um, I've heard that it could be sufficient for code enforcement. I do not want it to mean Brian, I'm sure he's done a fine job, I make no comments about that. So my, my, my idea would be to flip it, have Lennox be the primary employer. Par, par, somebody can handle that. Have me continue as the building official in Hartford and then the code enforcer in Hartford, that's up there to the city council and the staff. But just an idea to look at, look at, you know, but I feel like the train was running very hard and then suddenly bam, you know, it's hard to stop the train when I need nothing about this at all. And that's, you know, I'm like, I mean, I've produced a lot of things for the 11 years. A lot of phone calls, a lot of good businesses, a lot of good, you know, there's a, there's a lot of good residents who've been built, the good people, but they need to be a bonus for their, so. And they're every time, so, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Paul.
Well, at this point, it's just discussion, right?
Yeah, and I don't know if you want any input, what your thoughts and thoughts. I don't know if you've had any reaction from any council or any differences?
Um, thank Mayor, Bob City Administrator for Lennox. I haven't had a, a ton of discussions with councils, we have had this in front of them just for them to, to review. Um, I know from a building inspector code enforcer position, we, we needed one six months ago and we still didn't want. Um, and, uh, when, uh, when Teresa called me, um, I was on the verge of calling out her community myself to look for a similar arrangement. So, uh, it was well timed, it's a great, uh, great proposal from our perspective. Uh, it works out well for us. Uh, I think we're in the same boat, we could easily fill somebody's 20 hours a week uh, between building inspection, permit inspections and reviews and code enforcement. Uh, and we're, we're at a point where we're, you know, growing relatively quickly. Kind of an apex moment Lennox issue we were about, you know, the more I said town. Uh, just in the past month and a half, we've got 13 new residential permits coming. Um, so we know that we're going to have plenty to, to keep a person busy. Uh, but we're also not sure that we would have enough to keep a full-time person busy. Uh, I think a lot of towns our size, Hartford, Lennox, uh, and other towns our size are in that same mode. A lot, a lot of stuff going on, a lot of building permits, a lot of code enforcement work to do, but not enough to keep a full-time position employed. So I, I think this is the best of both worlds, to get a great full-time position. I think that's been lacking in our improvement efforts. Uh, I think we'll be able to cast a wider net and, and get that big fish every, meet the, to that. Sounds like the concern might be the pay. Uh, where's the pay rate generated from? Is it from industry standard? Is it from current pay rate of city staff or similar individuals?
So, um. So currently, and I guess it's public information, I don't want to, um, currently Paul's pay rate is $22.70 and Brian Boss' pay rate is $16.40.
Those are part-time positions.
And those are part-time positions, yeah. Um, if you figure in the mileys of pay, because I did figure that in, I added that in and figure it broke a back end, Paul's getting about $28 an hour and Brian's getting $17.50 from my wage.
Yeah, I'm just, I'd be curious what the city of Sioux Falls pays their full-time staff. Obviously it's public information, I mean, we could research what Paul is getting for his packet. That's the only other concern I have, I still think that pay rate's a bit low. To really, like you said, to pull in the big fish. So that's where the vehicle thing came in for me, especially if you drive in a vehicle in a triangular, you know, pattern, so to speak, if you just sit here, this is a company vehicle, we're not paid a mileage, can have a built-in or over there, adjust the pay rate accordingly.
So what are you utilizing for a building code inspector and code enforcer now?
Right now I do all of the code enforcement.
Okay.
Uh, I do the plan reviews and current reviews, uh, for building and zoning. Uh, then we have a, previously we had set aside somebody for emergencies, a local contractor that does the inspections, putting inspections, framing, filing, zoning. And I want to say our most recent pay is 26 a year for a part-time. I still think the position as mayor, I appreciate your passion, Paul, I appreciate your input as well.
Well, this is just proposed so far, so I'm assuming we'll have to keep this on the agenda for.
Um, I know Lennox, next council meeting is next Monday, is that right? Yep, um, so we tend that, we can present to them, get their thoughts and feelings and continue discussions if you want or, I mean, I don't, we can get their thoughts and feelings on it as well and concerns.
Yeah, that's probably the best bet and then, because you're planning to go, you're going to go down.
Yeah, yeah, I'm planning to go to the council meeting if they have any questions for me, but, you know, it'd be good to give some input and thoughts and feelings, we can bring that back and we can continue to look at this and see if this is viable or not.
Right, yep.
To the, to the point about the Friday PM Lennox, Friday PM Hartford, you know, really, it's, it's kind of split hairs, but those are alternated every other week.
Yeah, well, Lennox is only open till noon on Fridays.
Right.
Good for them.
Let's do that Travis, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I don't want to give anybody any. Four tens look pretty attractive, right?
Yeah, exactly. Well, well, I said, and then, you know, think of, okay, only half a day here, they'd have to drive between. Like I said, that doesn't make too much sense. And then I think, well, four tens though, maybe be a benefit to them to be able to come earlier and stay later for those, but.
Most people do two twenties, I think, is what I do. That's what I do. Trying to get my head wrapped around what I'm actually doing, but I think that's about the most. All right. For now, let's just go report in and we're, keep, uh, keep discussing. Paul, I agree with Travis, I appreciate your passion. Thank you for sharing that. All right. Now let's move on to talking about liquor. That's either, it's a better topic. So we're going to discuss the request for information or request for quote for our liquor license meeting and available.
So as you all know, we have one liquor license available, first one in years we ever had available. Um, obviously we want to, um, get that to the best candidate or the best fit for the city. So we discussed putting out, uh, our P O request for proposals up to the public where they would submit, um, information to us, basically saying why they would like the license, how they're going to use the license, you know, um, give us their business information as far as utilizing it, where they're going to be located, what kind of cells they think they're going to have. Um, and the proposal will have cover letter, like I said, all that business information, applicant information, um, all, all liquor licenses you have to fill out an application with the state, it comes with a $1,200 fee, that'll just be standard. So they'll have to fill out that application plus the fee. And then they have to put in what basically is their bid amount to basically buy this license from the city. Um, and just have basically how they're going to submit it at the very end. We put in that, you know, the city can review all these proposals and we reserve the right to reject any and all proposals. So it'll give the council a chance to look at all the proposals submitted. You do not have to go, this isn't a bid process, you don't have to go to the highest one. You can review the proposals, see which one is, you think is the best fit, if any of them. And, um, then you can, you know, make the motion to go with that one. So basically it's an R F E process. I do know about, I was telling Arden, you know, there's about three people in town that I think that are, would be interested in this license. But obviously we would advertise it, we'd send proposals directly to them because knowing they might be interested, we'd advertise it. I think it would be a good ideal to advertise in Sioux Falls as well. We don't do much advertising there, but there's a lot of businesses there that may be looking at expanding or they know we got a liquor license available that would probably be a lot cheaper than Sioux Falls. They may come relocate their restaurant or bar back out here. So, um, I think it'd be worth doing some advertising there, so. Um, I guess the first step is to look this over and see if it covers everything that we think we need to have and then we can basically start advertising. I did put the deadline date for the proposals into the city as October 12th. Um, put that in mind, I, I put that date thinking, you know, all liquor licenses are up at the end of the year. Um, with this October 12th deadline, we can look at it at our next council meeting. And then to renew liquor licenses, you got to advertise in the newspaper for so many days. This October 12th deadline will give us time to give a look at those proposals, act on one if we want to, and then be able to meet that publication date and get that in. So they could basically start January 1st with the new license, so that's why.
Looks like you've covered all the bases.
So then this is, since tonight we're just for a review, I would venture we should probably. So then this is, since tonight we're just for review, I would venture we should probably get this on the, if we're actually going to talk about it, would we write this as a...
This could be an action item.
Tonight?
Yes, and if you want, if you want, yeah.
If we want to move forward?
If you want to make a motion to advertise the R F E, then we can start advertising and move forward with it.
Thoughts amongst the four of us that are here?
R F E, R F I.
R F E, sorry, R F E's for proposals, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the review of R F E for liquor license proposals.
And, and advertise it?
And to advertise it, yes. Thank you.
I'll throw that out there. Any more discussion? I think that the, I won't say it's a, a state clause, but the nice thing is, we do have the right, so we can, we can review and refuse, because there is a certain amount of, what's the right word? Due diligence, I would assume, would be a, a good word, that we need to do on this field.
Right. You certainly don't want somebody that maybe has the highest purchase price, giving a license and sitting on it to...
Right.
So I mean, you want to look at the whole proposal, and what their intended use of it is.
What's good for our community.
Yes, what's the best fit for the community, yeah.
Any additional discussion on it? Just personally, I want to make sure that we have you involved, Amy, on this for sure, because we're discussing it, right? I'd like you to weigh in.
Yeah, I can come in, definitely.
Yeah, this is kind of a territory we haven't had, this is kind of a territory. Yeah, so, and it'll be interesting to see how this goes. All right, no other discussion? Ovo, Gil?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
O'era?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, thanks Teresa for putting that together. Our last item is under correspondence, we got a, award from the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources for drinking water excellence, Craig, look at you, you rock.
It's the dollars.
Huh? Everybody does it, yep. That's good. And this is sixteen years, is that right? No, it says in there.
Yeah, those are sixteen years, because that's the year we've gotten it, and all three, Craig, Neil, and Jesse, all got individual awards as well, so.
Awesome, congratulations. So I will just make a comment, two things, I moved here from Sioux Falls, and I'm a water drinker like no tomorrow, I can totally taste the difference. And my mother-in-law also comes out here, and every time she has a glass of water at our house, oh, this Hartford water is so good.
I was just going to ask, is it good or bad? She said the difference.
Yeah, no, yeah, good, yeah.
Crown. Well, Craig makes his crown. Not much, don't tell the deputy.
We don't make, we distribute it.
Let's keep that on the down-low, don't tell the deputy, that's what we're doing.
All right, that's good work.
Motion to adjutant session for, where are those two legal personnel, I suppose?
Or can we do economic development?
Economic development?
That might be the...
That would be legal, right?
Economic development? Yes, I think that's what just is here, economic development.
So which one?
The motion would be all three.
All three?
Yeah, let's check.
We'll cover the bases.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
Yeah.
Second. All in favor of going in the executive session? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And, all right, motion to adjutant?
Second.
Oh, I can make that, can't I? Yeah, motion to adjutant, second. Do I get to vote twice that? Oh, that was, that was before, all right, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, you guys.
Did you just vote twice?
Oh, that's way, goes way back.